As everyone knows, the meetings are now broadcast over live TV. With that, I'll entertain a motion for the meeting minutes.
Motion.
Motion by Pat to accept the meeting minutes. Seconded by John. All those in favor? Unanimous at four, one abstention. Lena.
Yes.
There's no eighty-one piece tonight. Next thing on the agenda is an update from Chad Borman of Eastland Partners on the Upper Child's Trail Phase Three.
Hi. For the record, I'm Chad Borman, representing Eastland Partners, Walden Woods Condo Community on the other end of town. We've made some headway with the bike trail. Actually have the thing probably about eighty-five percent cleared. Tomorrow, they're moving in with another piece of equipment, actually, a crane for there's a particular tree that's pretty close to a residential house and it's kind of an older tree, so it needs to be taken down, so there was a little bit of delay and the homeowners actually had an encroachment onto town property, which we took care of and had it engineered and laid out and they've consequently moved their shed, so we should be in good shape tomorrow. Down at the school, we did retrofit of the playground. Different pieces that were planned for relocation were relocated. And approximately probably about five hundred feet of fence was installed down that area of town for near the school, near the Catholic school. And then we, as of this Friday, we got four hundred and so feet of pavement installed, so that's already installed down there. So that was a good thing and school started and so it's pretty much they have their own gates and we have it barricaded off, so it worked out pretty good. We actually ended up constructing that portion, you know, ahead of time for everybody to rest their needs for keep the construction activity to a minimum down there, so. Relatively, there's some few, you know, items just need to be done, you know, looming with skirts of the pavement from the other day and dealing with some irrigation, existing irrigation lines that the school had in there, we have to retrofit, but that's not a huge huge deal at this time of year anyways. But other than that, it's been pretty decent. All the erosion control is in, probably about ninety percent of it, hay bales and like I said, the clearing is about eighty-five percent and the guys are mobilizing out there again tomorrow, so we'll start and we'll start in the strip and be underway. It's going quite well.
What do you think your plan is in terms of how far will you get done and when do you think you're gonna close up for the winter?
I still think probably turnkey will be fall of fall of next year, possibly even sooner.
Okay. I would assume this month you're full bore, probably next month after that we'll we can discuss whether you need to be coming in every month to give us updates or not.
Yeah, no doubt. Yeah, I've got, yeah, I've got another two or three good months to go out there. And actually, some things could actually happen during the winter. I could be building some walls, some stone walls and things that aren't typically weather dependent, but yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, we can have a discussion as to what, you know, because I think the board would like to continue with the updates, but I don't, unless there's something going on, I don't think we need to have you coming in.
Okay.
Lena, I noticed you were here tonight. I don't know if you had any comments or anything. I mean, I think the board, as far as I I know, has been pleased with the results and certainly the the lack of any of the butters or the school having any issues, so we're certainly appreciative of that because we know it's not an easy thing to do.
Yeah, we, as Chad said, we worked out several issues with the school. They had some things at the eleventh hour we had to cover and take care of, but they've been very cooperative in mostly complying with all the school's requirements. We got that all sorted out. They said they would get it paved before school opened. They did, which was good, so it's been going very well so far.
Okay.
They got your photos. I forwarded the photos to my email.
Oh, yeah, I saw them.
Yeah.
Yeah, they look good.
Yeah, we saw them all.
It's nice to get that, to see that.
Yep. I appreciate it.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
No.
You have a very good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chad.
Thanks, Chad.
Thank you. Next agenda item is site plan waiver for two oh six East Main Street All About You Style and Fitness LLC. Don't think anyone's here, Larry?
Rita'll allow. She was slightly.
Okay, with that, I'll I'll read the reports that we have. The applicant requests a site plan waiver to authorize the change in use of the naughtily one thousand two hundred square feet of the existing commercial building for the All About You style retail boutique on the subject property. The last change of use was to stock car rental, which this use is replacing. The boutique use is currently combined with the All About You Fitness Center in the adjacent building to the north within the plaza. Fitness Center will continue to occupy that space. All off-street parking requirements are met as the parking required for the boutique uses its is six spaces, which is one less than the seven previously required by the car rental agency. Proposed location was originally approved for retail use and this application is essentially a formality to confirm appropriate continued uses to the plaza. Therefore, I recommend site plan waiver, approval of site plan waiver. That's town from the town plan. That's the only letter that we have from from staff.
Can I just ask a quick follow-up question of Larry?
Certainly.
Larry, did they remove the seven, because we had a couple of reserved spots for the car rentals. Have the signage been removed for that or will it be removed?
It will be, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with the waiver, as long as they remove the signs, because there's no sense of keeping it any longer.
Well, I'm looking at the plan that they submitted. I don't believe there's anything.
It's not showing.
It's not showing, so.
I believe they were right in this area.
Right, that's where we did have them.
Yeah, they were up and back and they'll.
I guess we have the, you know, based on this, we have the right, if they're not removed, to certainly go back and tell them to remove it, because it's not shown in the new.
And again, I have no no problems with the waiver. I just want to ensure that those signs are removed consequently, because if he operates across the street and decides he wants to put his overtures over there, then we're defeating the purpose. Again, then we're defeating the purpose. That's why I just want to make sure that they're gone.
Any other comments from the board?
No.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll move to.
Motion to approve this waiver of site plan.
Second.
By Lena, seconded by Babe. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous at five. Next item is the site plan waiver for thirteen Cape Road Vendetti Bus Company. Your company? Mr. Antonellis.
How are you all tonight? Joe, come on. Julie, good evening. Joseph Antonellis on behalf of the applicant of Vendetti Bus Company. With me tonight is Joseph Vendetti, who is the owner of it, and his daughter Julie, who is one of the principal managers of the bus company. We're here tonight seeking a site plan waiver for a temporary storage facility, parking facility, for approximately eighteen buses. We have sixteen full-size buses and a couple of smaller buses that service just just the town of Milford. So what we're here for tonight is to talk about the town of Milford's school bus needs. Joe's family has been involved in transporting children in Milford for approximately sixteen years and I think has an outstanding reputation in the community for providing service. The present location, which they've had on Beach Street for years, is no longer available to them. They were able to get a two-week reprieve to be able to stay there when school started. And as you know from the next item on your agenda, we also have an application for a special permit pending with the zoning board. And in the interim, assuming that the zoning board process will take time and not knowing what will happen in the zoning board process, Joe needed to find a site in the town of Milford that would service the population and we were lucky enough to be able to contact the present tenant of the property at Fafoma Automotive Sales. That's they're the they're the tenant. The owner is Kevin Meehan. And through the cooperation of both Kevin and Fabio, who runs Fafoma, we were able to get into a situation with them where they will allow for temporary storage at that facility, provided that the planning board issues a site plan waiver. We have not placed the bus there yet. Fabio was very specific about it and Joe Antonellis was very specific about it, as was Joe Vendetti. We didn't want to do anything the wrong way. So with Larry's cooperation, we got an application in for this meeting, hoping that you'll give us a waiver of site plan, which will allow Joe to be able to park the buses there on a temporary basis. Our arrangement with Fabio is temporary at this point. We don't have a long-term lease. Obviously, we're gonna move towards the other project and I'm presuming the board may have some questions about that after you close this meeting. But for tonight, for the purpose of this public area, we're seeking an approval of waiver of site plan so that we can park the buses there. The area is already paved, it's fenced and locked at night, so it will be open, obviously, for Joseph to be able to use it, bring the buses out in the morning for the purpose of picking up children and bringing them to school, and then bring them back in the afternoon and then that's it. There won't be any other activity there. And again, I just want to reiterate, this is only for the Milford School District that we're doing this for. So again, no no site plan changes. There's an area you saw sketched out in your plan where the buses will be stored and there's gonna be no maintenance work down there on them at all.
I'll I'll read in reports from staff and then we can, if there's any questions. Applicant requests site plan waiver to authorize change in use of the easily easily portion of the rear parking lot of the subject property. Proposed use will be as a transportation terminal for the parking of school buses and will be in addition to Fafoma Auto Sales, which will remain on the property. Terminal use is likely to be temporary on the site as the applicant is seeking a permanent location for the bus operations. There are no changes to the site and there's sufficient area for the for driver parking, for driver vehicle parking. Therefore, I recommend approval of site plan waiver request, and that's the only letter from staff. Any questions, comments from the board?
Can I just ask a question of Larry?
Yep.
When we go back to the Fafoma Auto Sales, because I know he was, I think part of the reason why they put a fence up, because you were adamant about they could only have X amount of area for storage. My question is, by allowing this, although it's temporary to you, it opens up the door to allow storage in the future, does it not?
No.
It doesn't?
No, it's only you're approving their request for their temporary use, that's it. And if they find another site and it is temporary, then.
See, here's my problem, Joe, and I appreciate your quandary here. I'd prefer to probably look at the other one that you want rather than this, because it opens up the box, I think, to future, but that's not necessarily your issue. But on a historical perspective, once we do something, you know.
And I was involved in that process, Mr. Kennelly, so I do have some memory of it. My understanding of that particular process was the fence went up because at the time he was given a specific number as it related to how many vehicles he could have relative to his license.
Site plan and so on and so forth.
So those two things are tied together because he is regulated on the number of cars based on his license and not necessarily just on the site plan. So I think that at the time, your board wanted to constrict the auto sales to a specific area and then we came up, we came back in with the idea for the fence.
And I don't disagree with what you just said, but in theory, now allowing this storage and then in theory would allow further storage if you opt to leave, that's.
If, but only for vehicles that were allowed under his license.
Again, this is where.
These these vehicles are all registered.
Oh, I, listen, Joe, like I said, I prefer to deal with what exactly you're looking for and I can only imagine that future, in the future, this will pose a problem and I'll remember this and I'll say, Joe Antonellis caused this problem.
Right, well, it wouldn't be the first one. And hopefully not the last either, so.
Again, okay, yeah, no, I mean.
Yeah, I believe our site plan shows nothing in this area.
It does, it was almost prohibited.
Yeah, my my recollection was at the time that they came in, to be honest, was that Kevin wasn't leasing this area, which was one of the main issues why we wanted to make sure this was gated off, because we also saw the possibility of tax abatement issues and stuff, because the whole site wasn't used and all sorts of separate issues, so we wanted to make sure we had a defined site. But I, you know, again, it's still, he would have to come back if he wanted to do it for vehicle sales, because he still has no right to do any more vehicles.
No, but he wouldn't have to come back if he continued after, if they were to leave and continue to do other storage that, you know, may or may not be vehicle.
Well, this is just.
I understand, Larry, I understand, but I'm getting, there's a lot of things that happened. With that said, I mean, I'll stick with what you're asking for.
Thank you.
And I'll grant the waiver, because I don't, I understand, but I think in the future it's gonna, it opens up the Pandora's Box.
Joe, as you mentioned, are they getting, are you leasing that now from Kevin?
No.
So this is a different lease.
Right, this will be all, yes. That'll that'll all take place tomorrow, assuming arguendo that you approve the site plan waiver.
Well, it seems to me he needs he needs to put the buses someplace to take our kids to school and back home from school. If he's only gonna be there two weeks, I have no problem with it.
I don't have a problem with it. I don't have a problem with Vendetti.
We may be there more than two weeks, again, assume.
You're gonna be there longer than two weeks.
Right, because even if even if the special permit's granted next Thursday night.
With the appeal and everything else.
We're gonna have to come back to the planning board for a site plan on that particular property right after, so we'll be back. It'll be a process before we're able to move the buses to that site.
Yep.
So it'll be a month or two, or at least.
Yeah, depending on the schedule of the board.
Any other comments? I have a motion in front of me to grant the site plan waiver from Pat. Do I hear a second? Seconded by John. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous at five.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's one down.
So. We'll stay in our seats.
Should. Don't jump up and yell.
This is a.
Have to do a lap around.
ZBA special permit for Vendetti Mode is fifty-three, this site is fifty-three Dillas Street. With that, I'll turn it over back over to you, Joe, and then I'll read the staff letters after.
Thank you. We have the opportunity to purchase the property that's owned by Genwall. It's been a contractor's yard for quite some time. You're all familiar with the property, the very, the stone building in in across the area from Landscape Depot, recognize that it's a residentially zoned area, also recognize that it has been a pre-existing non-conforming use for all of our lifetimes, I believe. It had been used for manufacturing oils and oil treatment at some point. The process of purchasing the property has taken some time and what Joe and his family are looking for is to take out what just happened, which is to have the uncertainty of where the buses are gonna be parked within the town confines. Again, longstanding relationship with the town of Milford that's been advantageous for both parties, for the Vendetti family as the contractor and for the town as the recipient of those services. And they're committed to making the Milford project work and while one might ordinarily think that this is not the best site, it has some some significant potential to provide a good spot for the storage of buses. We believe that as we go forward, the area can be properly screened and can be maintained in such a way that there'll be no threat to the environment. I'm aware that there are conservation issues there that have been addressed by the present owner. I know that there will be, there's gonna be an application soon for a certificate of compliance. I know that Gary Aaron Hellman is working on some plans relative to easements and drainage wells and those kinds of things. So we're anticipating that there's gonna be some work to be done, but obviously, we need to get the approval of the zoning board. We don't have it for you tonight, but Joe is preparing a detailed list of the truck, excuse me, of the traffic that will be entering and exiting the site in the specific times with full knowledge that obviously Dillas Street is a very, very busy street. And again, now what we gotta remember is is that we're not talking about transporting children here. We're talking about getting the buses out to do that job. And many of these buses are on Dillas Street on a regular basis. And Joe is working on a schedule now and I think we'll have it in time, certainly have it for in advance for the zoning board meeting, which will show how the trucks and the trips are going to be generated outside of the facility, the types of turns that will be made, and the specific times that the buses will be leaving and then coming back. There are routes that are going to be able to be reached by this present location that are gonna make things easier for the bus company and in fact, reduce traffic in other spots. And again, we we're gonna have, we're gonna have information on all that. I know that as you look at it on the face, because we all drive on Dillas Street and Mr. Pat Nari's sitting behind me and lives very, very close by, and I'm sure he can attest to the traffic on that street as well as anybody can. But we really believe with the conscientious efforts of the family and the manner in which this is run, that we can use that site and make it work and continue to service the town of Milford. Now, I say that, I know we're looking for your recommendation. I know that planners look at it differently because you're facing the issues of traffic, but again, we believe that the site can work for that that particular purpose. Most of the afternoon traffic will luckily be done before it gets really busy there. I understand that the morning traffic is gonna be the impact traffic there. But again, Joe's been at the site. He's studied it. He's watched the cars going by. He's done his own traffic counts. He's familiar with his business and knows it better than anybody and he's going to make a significant investment in this property, because this is not a lease. This is a purchase and the purchase is contingent upon all the approvals. So again, I can only say to you, the person who knows the best about it believes it can work there. And we welcome the questions and I understand the position of the board in these kinds of circumstances.
Thanks. Let me read the town planner's letter. The applicant requests special permit to allow for the change from one non-conforming use to another on the subject property. Section three point one of the zoning bylaw provides for change from one non-conforming use to another by special permit from the zoning board of appeals. Proposed use of transportation terminal for the parking of fifteen to twenty school buses. The property has been vacant for a number of years. The last legal use of the property was as a contractor's yard. Proposed use dramatically add to traffic congestion onto Dillas Street at the worst times of the day. Dillas Street is already overburdened with traffic, especially at peak hours. In addition to adding an intensive vehicle-related use immediately adjacent and upgrading to the Charles River Acre, as they'll advise. Further, the surface stormwater runoff from the subject property drains its Milford pond to the salt. Therefore, I recommend unfavorable to the ZBA. That's from town planner. Questions from the board?
I have a couple.
Go ahead.
Joe, generally speaking, from Beach Street now, what time do your buses generally leave roughly? Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
He just kept referencing Joe. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
Generally, our buses would be leaving six forty-five in the morning and they'll be on their routes, continuing like they start with their high school runs and then they go down.
Yep.
So the traffic where they would be out on their routes is they would leave.
I'll talk about traffic. I just wanna know what time they generally leave.
Six forty-five, coming back around eight fifteen, eight thirty.
Okay, and then in the afternoon, it's generally right around one thirty.
One thirty, coming back around, coming back around three fifteen.
That's what I figured. And you're also gonna run your minivans out of there as well as your, I don't know where you run your minivans now.
Two.
Two minivans.
Just two and the rest are all large to small buses, okay.
And those minivans serviced in town, Milford.
No, no, no.
Okay.
I used to be on the school committee, so I have, I know just a little, not much, just a little. I gotta tell ya, I don't think that fifteen buses leaving at quarter to seven, determining on which direction you're going, is gonna really be that much of a concern on Dillas Street. I travel Dillas Street quite frequently and around that time and other than the traffic light on the top of Dillas and going on the four ninety-five, that stretch is reasonably open. My, I guess, concerns would be if you were successful at the zoning board, would be just your your line of sight coming out of that, coming out of that site would be a concern of mine.
Ninety percent.
No, 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 you don't even have to talk about it now, because you need zoning board so it's.
Okay.
If you're successful, coming back. I'm just kinda forecasting the future, if you will. And then, of course, I would certainly be concerned about any type of maintenance you're gonna do there, the type of asphalt and so on and so forth, when we talk about runoffs, things of that nature. If you were to wash buses there, that would be another concern of how you're going to address that, because you can't do it outside, so I'm just, again, forecasting the future for you. Those are my only, I was just more concerned about.
Yeah.
Your starting point and and your intermediate times and I have to slightly, I think that you're almost gonna be indistinguishable.
I mean, I don't, I don't think what's in front of us, twenty buses, twenty drivers showing up, if we were looking at usage of that building, any type of uses that we use would would constitute that type of traffic. So are we saying that we can't use that building? I don't think that's reasonable.
Me either.
So I I'm not, whether we're worried about the traffic or not, I believe the.
The usage is ideal.
Yeah, I think the, and I and I believe they have the right to be able to use that property in in some form and so I don't think we're adding a whole lot of traffic that they don't legally have the right to do. So I, if they think they can run their business out of it with with the traffic that's there, I believe that, you know, I don't see it being a huge impact in anything more than what they could have done within the existing non-conforming use.
I agree. Can I just ask, just a quick?
Yeah, just let me.
Go ahead.
The, the, the one thing I guess that, and I'm not sure, I'm not sure whether it's better or worse in terms of what you were looking at to do, but it'll be, it'll be an interest here, is whether you're anticipating paving the whole area where you're parking the buses or not in terms of runoff. Because you get into two different issues. You get into, you know, we'd rather not have it paved per se, but you get into the issue with the buses. If they're if they're dripping grease or oil, that gets, it's in a location that we would rather have that controlled and have, you know, have it go into an oil-water separator before it discharges. So that'll be of interest when that comes back. I'm not sure what the best answer is, to be totally honest, and I would assume between town planner, if it if it gets past the zoning board, town planner and town engineer, they will have their opinions and I may have my own at that point. But but that certainly will be one of the issues. The other thing is, is as Pat said, the turning movements and you may need to do some work with the with the driveway entrance to make sure that your radiuses are adequate, to make sure the buses get out in both directions. But those are my comments. Do you have another additional one?
Pretty much you're running the same operation they did on on.
Beach Street.
Beach, sorry.
You'll be too.
And you've been there.
Eighteen.
Eighteen, sorry.
Yeah, eighteen years.
And barely noticeable, so I really don't think that this use, specific to Dillas Street, is even, if we could say it's, it's in principle, based on your usage, I don't think you're gonna really stick out there at all, so.
That's a hundred and eighty days a year.
Right.
It's just the school.
Unequivocally, I, again.
We do, it's very, very minimal, other days.
Like I said, you, you've been there for eighteen years and hardly noticeable.
The other thing is, is relative to the intensity Joe brings up, that it is a hundred and eighty days and also there's no activity at night and I can tell you, because I've been tangentially involved with this piece of property with other people who have knocked on the door about uses and just about everybody else has had a use that involved that place, that building being at night for customers or clients or whatever. So again, I think the, I think the intensity of use is such that we can, we can make that work in a residential neighborhood.
They do use them at night sometimes for.
Right, for school buses.
School buses.
Basketball, that sort of thing, right.
Basketball games coming back and forth.
But very minimal.
But they're usually back in by nine o'clock at night, right?
That's really no problem.
That's no problem, right.
But again, it's not, you're not gonna have people going in and out.
Right.
It's just the driver, you know, going in.
There's one driver. So might just assume that the buses are coming out and going up Dillas Street and going down, or is it?
Ninety percent of our routes will have the buses turning right onto Dillas Street.
Okay, that's what I.
The other amount will have to, will have them go down some or turn around, because they are going to be servicing those that live on Dillas Street.
Okay.
Which they would be on that street anyways, to pick up those children, to bring them to school.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
Yeah, as far as the traffic, I've worked at the water company doing construction work at that time of the morning going in and there's no problem. And also, we just went through a construction project at the water company with RH White and again, they are all starting at the same time doing.
Mm-hmm, yeah, true, good point.
There wasn't much.
There wasn't, there wasn't any problem.
I don't know if there was anything, yeah, it was anything worse. You know, we know that there's.
I mean, low beds and dump trucks and.
Takes a while for them to get into the site.
Probably had just as many workers there at one, one, one time or another, if not more. I don't, again.
I don't see traffic as being the problem.
Any, anything else?
And let me also comment, the buses, with the rules we have in the state for the buses, the buses are fairly new.
Yeah.
They're inspected constantly. So as far as leakage and grease and all that.
No, I, yeah. I, it's just, it's, yeah, I know, well, it's still one of those things where.
Yeah.
We're aware that we're gonna have to answer that site plan. We need to answer questions regarding washing the buses. We understand that, the storage, how it's gonna be paved. We're gonna obviously seek opinions on that and have begun to do that relative to grease traps, separations and those sort of things. And it's not intended to be a maintenance facility. There will be some use, some maintenance will take place, but we're not gonna have engines overhauled or anything like that.
but we're not gonna have engines overhauled or anything like that. It would be cleaning and making sure that everything is right, just what, what Babe said, that we don't, there's inspections that go on all the time that, in this industry, so.
In Milford, they still only allowed you to run ten-year, but, ten-year-old buses or newer, correct?
No, it's a little different. It's um, nothing over five years at time of bid. And then the average age has to be, I forget exactly, but most of the buses in Milford are probably three to four years max.
I don't, yeah, if I recall correctly.
Other than ours bears maybe. They're all fairly new buses in Milford.
And they're inspected, the school buses are inspected, all the vehicles are inspected three times a year.
By the registry.
By the registry. Excellent. Oh.
Do we hear a motion?
So I'll make a move, a, a move that we send a favorable recommendation to the CBA for the special permit.
Motion by Lena to send a favorable recommendation to the ZBA, seconded by Babe. Any other further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Night.
Good night.
Good night, Joe. It's good to see you, Joe.
Nice to be here.
Nice to see you.
Good to be seeing you, Joe.
I hope so.
ZBA special permit, Milford Regional Medical Center.
Doctor.
Wow, eliminated and everything.
Okay?
Yep.
Good evening, uh, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Ernie Pettenary. I'm a lawyer here in Milford. My office is at twelve Main Street. And I'm here tonight to speak to you about an application to the Milford Zoning Board of Appeals that is pending for hearing next Thursday evening. The application is on behalf of the Milford Regional Medical Center, who, which is proposing to expand in the area shown in yellow on that pretty plan that I just pinned to the wall. They are proposing to construct a three-story addition with parking underneath, to expand their emergency room facility, some intensive care room additions, and to change the configuration of the traffic and parking that's on the site. The proposed addition and the changes that they are making do not in any way violate any provision of the zoning bylaw. However, the hospital has been on, the, the Milford Hospital had been on that property for over a hundred years, and when zoning first came to Milford, that parcel of property was zoned residential. The hospital is a permitted use in the residential A-zone, but expansion of the, the facility in previous years has taken place in such a way that there have been incursions into the required front and side setbacks on the property. So it's now a non-conforming structure that conforms in use. Because it's a non-conforming structure, the provisions of three point one point three of the zoning bylaw require that any additional expansion of the facility also secure a special permit to authorize it. That's what this application is about. The, the Milford Regional Medical Center, under its present configuration, purchased properties that are on the northerly side of Huntune Slip recently. And this will incorporate those properties into the traffic pattern and into the areas for parking and service for the facility as it is expanded. The medical center proposal involves expenditures in excess of fifteen million dollars. It continues the regional medical center's practice of trying to offer state-of-the-art excellence in medical care to the community of Z- Milford and its surrounding environs. And we believe that in terms of its zoning impact to the town, it creates a situation where no additional incursions into side yards are made. There is a reconfiguration of parking, which we believe to be an improvement, and the creation of the new parking and traffic patterns on-site, we also believe to be improving the facility. Um, on the basis of that, we're here tonight to seek the favorable recommendation from your honorable board for our proceedings next Thursday evening in front of the zoning board of appeals. I'm here to answer any questions you have which relate to either the engineering or the architecture. I can't answer anything about any of the medical facilities other than its emergency room and intensive care.
I'll read staff's letter in, and then we can ask Mr. Pettenary any questions we may have. The applicant requests special permit to allow for the expansion of the non-conforming medical center use on the subject property. Section three point one point three of the zoning bylaws provides for the expansion of non-conforming uses by special permit from the zoning board of appeals. The applicant is proposing a one hundred and fifteen thousand square foot, three-story addition to the medical center. The proposed addition will extend to the east along the Main Street front, towards Huntune Slip. Small area of parking is to be relocated, and eighty-eight new parking spaces are proposed with this expansion, some of which will be incorporated as the lower-level parking garage under a portion of the new building. An improved, an improved internal traffic circulation pattern is being proposed with widening and realignment of a portion of Huntune Slip at, as this will be the location of the only Main Street access to the medical center campus. The proposed design will dramatically improve access to and within the campus for emergency vehicles, as well as for delivery vehicle staff, visitors, and patients. Save for the special permit currently being requested, all other applicable zoning provisions appear to be met. Therefore, I recommend favorable be forwarded to ZBA. It should be noted that a site plan review is required from the planning board subsequent to ZBA special permit approval. Uh, any questions or comments from the board?
You, you moved the primary entrance to that area to Main Street, then?
It, it will be off of Main Street in the vicinity of Huntune Slip, yes, yep.
Is the idea that, that Huntune Slip will be re-designated in terms of the roadway, or how, how we?
At, at the present time, it's not yet definitively taken shape, but it is contemplated that at some point, the area that currently constitutes Huntune Slip will all be acquired by the hos, by the regional medical center, and consequently, at some point, there may be a move to abandon
Yeah, that's what I was gonna, that's
the public way that is now Huntune.
Oh, okay.
Should've bought it before they built the duplex.
Uh, there were, there are some timing issues on the purchases, correct?
Do they own any of the properties on that side, do you know, right, right now?
Presently, they bought, they bought the two that were furthest from the corner. The one on the corner is not.
Okay, just, just an ask. And, and the idea is that emergency will be moving then from that end to, to someplace in, in that's
That's absolutely right, yes. What, what's going to happen is that the access point here will be utilized for ambulances and other emergency vehicles, and consequently, will take the stress off of the Prospect Street area and will reconfigure the orientation of the facility in this general direction, yes.
And so you're allowing, I, I believe the, the passageway from the existing building where, where you go underneath the Gannett Wing, that will now be connected so that you'll go down, you can, you'll be able to go all the way down in front of this and get down to the Huntune Slip entrance?
Yes, yes. And the interesting thing from an architectural point of view, which I never would have thought of, and I'm sure maybe some of you have, is that the floors inside the facility will all be matched, so that there will be, uh, everything will be level, except but, but, but the contours of the property are such that that took a great deal of effort on their part. Um, the other thing that I want to make sure that, that the members of your board are aware of, the facility has been very, very careful in reaching out to the abutters to inform them of everything that's happening, and there, there is presently a meeting scheduled with the abutters tomorrow evening at the facility, so that the plans and the renderings, et cetera, can be shown to them, and an ex, fuller, a, a, a very full explanation of the traffic circumstance, the, the changes in the traffic circumstances can be explained. Um, the only question that has arisen thus far is relative to um, policies with respect to sirens, et cetera, and the policies that are in place for the Prospect Street entrance will govern on Main Street as well.
Is the uh, is it pretty much the same in terms of impervious area that's already parking mostly in that area, as is, is that? So now we have some issues with Hospital Brook in terms of drainage, I'm just thinking going forward.
I don't know how to answer the question about the, the provision of impervious services. As I understand the engineering that's been done relative to stormwater management, there is a reduction in, in flow runoff, correct?
Guess we'll see that.
For the site plan. And, and the plan, by the way, is that we hope to be back here at your next meeting for the site plan review as well.
Okay. Any other questions, comments from board?
No. No. I make a motion we give a favorable recommendation to the plan of zoning board.
Motion by Babe to give a favorable recommendation to the ZBA on a special permit. We hear a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by John. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Something just dawned on me.
Okay.
Let me publicly disclose as, as it just dawned on me that my daughter, as part of her college requirement, did a internship this summer at Milford Hospital, Milford Regional Hospital Emergency Room. I'm disclosing that publicly as, because it has no influence to this vote, but it just dawned on me, so I figured I'd make mention of it.
Okay. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous at five. Better that way. Hillview. Will we have to wait for Mr. Pettenary for this one? You ready?
Could Ernie position?
Yeah, this is ZBA special permit, eleven Commercial Way, Hillview Equipment Corner Brook LLC. He's, he's, yeah, he's recused himself.
Um, again, I'm, I'm here um, on behalf of, of Hillview and Corner Brook. Um, again, Ernie Pettenary, twelve Main Street. This application is necessitated because of the pervasion of technology into the modern world. The owners and operators of Hillview have regularly participated in the purchase of heavy equipment online. And many of the online purveyors of heavy equipment now require that anyone seeking to participate in their auctions have a license to do so issued by the community in which they operate. The only license that would be even remotely relevant would be a class-two license. So as a fulfillment of that requirement of some of these online auction sites, they now need to be licensed by the town, and they are seeking by this application to obtain the necessary special permit to facilitate the application to the Board of Selectmen for the issuance of a class-two license. Their intention would be to make no change in the way they do business. We have shown on this special permit plan one parking space dedicated to the display of a vehicle in the front-left corner of visitor parking closest to the cul-de-sac on Commercial Way, with the expectation that at some point in time, if it became necessary so to do, that equipment could be posted there, and it would be conforming to the license. They don't seek to sell used cars, they're not looking to do any of that kind of business, but because of the way in which the bylaw is written, they are required to get a special permit, and this preliminary meeting is a prerequisite to the issuance of the special permit by the ZBA, which in turn is a prerequisite to the issuance of the class-two license by the Board of Selectmen. That's basically it. I am able to answer any questions about this application that you might have, and that's where I would propose to leave it.
Read staff's letter. The applicant requests special permit to allow for the addition of used vehicle sales to the existing heavy equipment business on the subject property. Section two point three of the zoning bylaw provides for used motor vehicle sales by special permit from ZBA. Special permit is being sought to facilitate obtaining a class-two license for the display and sale of one used motor vehicle on-site. This is in order to accommodate various suppliers' requirements that the applicant holds such a license and will not be in conflict with the use previously approved on this site. There should be no noticeable difference in the day-to-day operations of the facility. Therefore, I recommend a favorable report be forwarded to the ZBA. It should be noted that a site plan review is required from the planning board subsequent to ZBA special permit approval.
Okay.
Any questions, comments from the board?
That makes sense.
The applicant have a great moral character.
He, he is a person of fine, upstanding rectitude in the community.
Seeing the, I was like, it is
A move for favorable report to the ZBA.
Just had one, I guess the only, this, this would be to the, to the owner, so it wouldn't, it, it wouldn't continue on if the use changed in the future.
Right.
That was my only comment.
We, excuse
No difference than uh,
Than any of the others, I just wanted to make sure.
Any other class-two license.
Excuse me just a second. The, the application is made in such a way that, that, to accommodate that very concern. I made the application from the applicant, who is the owner of the business, which is Hillview, and the owner of the real estate. So the permit will run to the owner of the real estate, correct?
I already moved.
Motion by John to send a favorable recommendation to the ZBA, seconded by Babe. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous of four with one abstention. Pat?
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Have a good evening.
Thank you, you too, Ernie.
Sorry.
We're so used to saying
It'll be the hospital forever.
Yep. But again, thank you very much.
Me too, Ernie.
ZBA special permit, seven Midway Street, Planet Aid.
Hello.
Hi.
I'm Adrian Kern, representing Planet Aid at forty-seven Sumner Street. I'm here um, to amend a pre-approved special permit. I'm basically asking to relocate one of our boxes from an initial approved location to a new spot approximately ten feet away.
You're moving it ten feet from?
It, uh, I believe the special permit from last time, there was a place marked that it was agreeable to the tenant and the owner. When we went to place the box there, there was actually a book box there. Um, so we put, we placed it where, where it, somewhere else, ten feet away. And then when we went to move it, where the special permit and everybody was agreed for, Hannaford's tenant didn't want it there. They wanted it where we placed it while the book box was in its place. So in, in order to um, you know, comply with special permit, um, I, we were told that we needed to amend it, and that's why I'm here.
Okay.
Let me read staff. The applicant requests special permit to allow for placement of two four-by-four portable storage containers at the above-listed site as located in the attached site plan for the purpose of collection of used clothing. ZBL section three point two point five point one specifically provides for portable storage, containers, and commercial industrial districts by special permit from the ZBA. This application is essentially an amendment to the previously approved special permit to change the location for the placement of the collection boxes. The original location nearer to the Hannaford building became problematic for the store. The proposed new location is slightly further away from the store, directly north of the original location, and near the edge of the parking lot. Both of the collection boxes will still display on all four sides the company logo, the words clothes and shoes, as well as various instructions and other pertinent information. The proposed new location was developed after consultation with staff and the Hannaford store manager, and will not generate any new traffic. It situated prevented interference with both vehicular and pedestrian circulation within the site. Proposed new location is not within the public way or required front yard. Therefore, I recommend a favorable report be forwarded to the ZBA. It should be noted that a site plan review is required from the planning board subsequent to ZBA special permit approval.
Motion.
It says two boxes. Did you say one or two?
This is the original, check the date on it.
Two, two boxes were approved, and that's what we're asking for this time as well.
Okay.
Two four-by-four.
Two four-by-four.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Motion.
Motion by Pat to send a favorable recommendation to ZBA, seconded by John. Any other further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous at five.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
With that, I'll entertain a motion to uh, move to adjourn. Motion by John to
Before you do it, Bill wanna, Bill come in and come out to you?
I think he was here for the hospital.
Huh?
I think he was here for the hospital.
Oh, okay.
Motion by John to adjourn. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Lena. All those in favor? Unanimous at five.